All right, so I'm gonna officially call the meeting to order at 6:01 on Monday, January 27th, for the Woodbury Select Board. Any adjustments to the Select Board agenda?
I do have one.
Okay.
I have one also.
I forgot to put on here that we were going to officially appoint Lilly as our new treasurer effective February 3rd. Well, February 30 is her start date.
Right, so let's do that during our treasurer's report.
Definitely.
Right, and Michael?
So I wanted to, I think I sent you, all of you emails about this new grant from the Brick Program, Building Resilient in Construction and Communities 2024 Grant. It was the Hazard Mitigation Grant that, the application that we submitted last fall, I think, or sometime early in the winter. And it got sidetracked. They didn't want to, they said it wasn't really appropriate for a Hazard Mitigation Grant. And then last week, I got an email from the Modern Emergency Management asking, inviting Woodbury to apply for a scope in funding for this particular Brick Grant for the, and they're calling it the Woodbury-Buck Lake Road Funding Study. That was that kind of comprehensive planning, design study thing that we were going for. So I just wanted to have a sense from the Select Board if they would like me to go ahead with pursuing that. I can explain more, but maybe we could do it under the USDA Emergency Management.
Okay.
Sounds good. Thanks, Michael.
You said Brick, B-R-I-C?
Yeah, that's the, yeah.
Any other adjustments to the agenda? All right, hearing none, we're gonna move on to approving minutes from January 13th and the January 21st meetings.
Okay, there. There's the 13th.
You've got a chance to look at it.
Yep.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from January 13th.
You wanna just group in the 21st as well?
Sure, yeah, the 21st.
All right. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously, and we'll sign the minutes, hand them over to Robin.
Lizzie, here's your copies of those.
All right, our next item is public comment. Nate, can you remind me of your last name, Nate?
C. Card.
Nate C. Card is here, but he has a place on the agenda, so I don't believe that there's any other public to speak, so we'll move on to the Town Clerk's report.
I had a request from Kim Sylph to the Select Board to work on getting better cell service in the town of Woodbury. He, and I quote, he says, "How many more deaths is it gonna take, Route 14 down through the Harburg before we get better cell service?"
Do you know what he meant by that?
Well, we had the one person down on County Road Extension, the elderly gentleman that passed away.
Wait, was this recently?
Oh, three years. He was dead when they found him, so that, it wasn't...
Three years ago?
Oh.
Yeah, but if there was cell service, he had a cellphone, he, there's a chance, you know?
Oh, if he thinks he might have...
Gotcha.
Well, he tried to call somebody.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that's definitely...
But that was his request.
Okay.
And then I got an email from Chris Wright, who now owns Shatney's Old Garage, asking if there's something more that can be done to the beavers, because he's still getting a lot of water in his basement there.
I have, I have a comment about that that I'm glad to talk about. I actually sent an email to Chris Wright last summer that I didn't respond to. Most of the water that's going in his basement is runoff from Route 14. It was a rainy day that I was down, I kept those dams notched all last summer fall, and a heavy rain had crossed over, and it just saw a lot of water running right down the driveway and then right into the basement from Route 14. I sent him an email about that, never got any response. So it's not the beaver that are causing the problem down there.
Do you want me to forward you the email that he sent?
Sure. And I'll send him another email.
And would the Select Board also like to see that email?
Sure.
Yes, please.
Okay. And this morning, when I turned on my email, I also got the warning for Mountain View Union Elementary School District. Their annual meeting is going to be February the 25th at 6 o'clock at Harburg Elementary School. So all clerks will go there, and all voters will go there to do the voting.
But the, but that's not the, you don't have the voting at the town office anymore, or at the town hall?
No, but this, they have three or so different articles on here that they have to do out there as the union vote.
They're not on a ballot? They expect people to go out there and...
That's what we've done before.
Yeah, we always did it last year.
But, and they go out there to count, but then...
No, there was voting out there last year, also with Hazen. 'Cause I had to go to both of them.
I thought I saw a notice that you had posted in the office, and the town report on the end of the...
Yeah, for then I have voting the actual town meeting day also.
Okay, so it's not, you mean the town, the Tuesday town meeting day?
The Tuesday town.
Okay, that's what I was talking about. That's when people would vote.
Because that's one on the budget for the score.
Yeah, and this here is for the officers.
Okay.
Right.
So we should be, hopefully, somebody from Woodbury is gonna volunteer to take on his So she resigned.
Oh?
Oh, she did?
Yeah.
I didn't know that.
I hadn't heard that.
Yeah.
She resigned, or she's just not running again?
Hmm?
Did she resign, or is she just not running again?
She resigned.
Okay.
After the last meeting.
On a fels.
On a fels.
Really?
Okay.
Yeah. She was pretty frustrated. Boy, I was not impressed with that board. No leadership and disorganized.
All right.
And the other thing, I'm sure that you all have received the email from Stephen Murphy about the 30th Annual Mark Town Meeting. Okay. And I, oh, and I spoke to Alfie today, and he came down to close that window for me.
Really?
And that entryway is so much warmer now.
How did he do that?
He brought down a step ladder, and he actually had to open the bottom window and pull down the top window, and then put the top window back up so it would get up in there so he could latch it.
Great, great.
That's where he landed. Couple weeks later.
And that's all I got for the Town Clerk's report.
All right, thank you, Robin.
You're welcome.
All right, so we have Brandy was not able to be here this evening.
And she sent you each one of the treasurer's reports?
Yep. So do, and just take a second to just take a peek at that. Michael, do you have a copy of this?
I do.
Okay, great. Any questions about the treasurer's report? Hearing none, maybe we'll move on to the agenda item for appointing our new treasurer. So for the sake of the meeting minutes, we interviewed, advertised and interviewed for a new treasurer to replace Brandy Smith, and are excited to have offered the position to Lilian Barron, Lilly Barron. And I think tonight is simply formality to, and she accepted, is formality to officially appoint her treasurer effective February 1st.
Third.
Third.
Right?
Well, the first is Saturday.
Okay, so, February 3rd. So is there a motion to that effect?
And that's until town meeting day?
Until town meeting day, right, correct.
I'll make a motion?
All right.
Second?
Any discussion regarding the motion to appoint Lilly Barron?
Well, just in case there's any question, I had, found this copy today when I was cleaning out my books, section 963 of something. "When a vacancy occurs in any town office, the Select Board forthwith by appointment in writing shall fill such vacancy until an election is had, except that in the event of vacancies of a majority of the Select Board, at the same time such vacancies shall be filled by a special town meeting." But anyways, yeah, the first thing, the first line, so gives us the authority to appoint when there's an empty position.
Thank you for looking that up. Michael, did you have questions?
I just had a question, is Lilly gonna be running for treasurer at town?
Yes.
Yeah.
She quit her job, and, you know, I just hope she wins. Yikes.
I can't imagine.
Yeah. I haven't heard anybody else raising their hand, the one that...
All right, so there's a motion on the table. Any discussion, further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of appointing Lilly Barron, our new town treasurer, effective February 3rd, until town meeting? Please say aye.
Aye.
Want you?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
It does say in writing, so I'll, I'll write something.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Our next item is to open contractor bids for the mitigation projects, are they mitigation projects?
Well, there are two bridges.
Yeah, Town Highway 23 and Town Highway 24 bridges. And I think that we decided that we would open them here in open meeting, and if there was a reason that we needed to have an executive session, we could do that. But...
Yeah, I'll give you some guidance if I thought you needed it.
Yeah, thank you, Nate.
Oh, thank you. So let's go for it.
All right. Is there a protocol, or a...
If you just maybe open one at a time, you say who they are, crazy amount?
It's like they go together, right? Same contractor, maybe?
I'll do this.
So bid...
Seven?
Oh, this is... It's for, and they're all stamps, thank you.
Oh, yeah, so this one is for 23, and that one's for 24?
This is from Daryl Matthews, Matthews Excavating from Waterford, Vermont. This one is...
Which bridge is it, which structure? 23 or 24?
Believe it.
23 or 24?
It came out of this one, so I believe it's 24.
24, okay. Lump sum price, $174,879.
$174,79.
That's for 24?
That's for 24.
And for 23, $172,050.
Can you say that again, Diana, the amount?
All right, keep them in there. Want to open them up?
Sure.
I'm just gonna...
This one says 24, it only says 24. So this one is from Austin Construction, from Concord, Vermont. Austin Construction?
Austin, you said?
A-U-S-T-I-N.
Okay.
You said Town Highway 24?
Yeah, so, yep, it says Town Highway 24. Lump sum price for project, $305,600. I'm just looking at other information that might be relevant. And it doesn't... So there's a bunch more information here that I'm assuming we'll all take an opportunity to look at?
Yeah.
I can probably explain that.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, because there was a chance the project sort of had been over $250,000, I included some federal language to make sure that we were covered, and also I asked them to be bonded, payable performance bonds. So his price is over $250,000, so I'm sure he's got, he might, he might be sharing some of that information, so.
Okay.
But I can, I'll, once you go through all of them, I'll quickly go ahead and just...
Okay.
Or did the R, was there two separate RFPs?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize that. And so he's only bidding for one?
That is what I'm getting from this. It looks like just one.
Hmm.
George does, he does more larger bridge projects. I remember a couple, well, a couple years ago, when Saint Ange came through in Alice and did three structures.
Yep.
George does a lot more, kinda like Saint Ange does.
Okay.
So I'm surprised that he's been on 24. If anything, I would've thought he'd been on 23, but I don't know.
No. I don't know if that'll be... Oh, yeah, it says 24 structure.
Yeah.
Yep, it was 24. All right. These are both from the same, I'll give you 23, and I'll give you 24.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
It looks like the other stuff is stuff that printed from the bid documents.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's some, I added a certain condition regarding lobbying, which is a standard federal form.
What does that mean?
It basically says if these guys don't lobby, when federal funds are used, they're not lobbying, that was Congress.
Got it.
So it's nothing to ever deal with here. Maybe, maybe Wells could lobby, or Sanders, but I find that pretty unlikely.
All right, so Diana is opening Kirk Fenoff and Sons.
Okay.
And she's got Town Highway 24.
24?
Yes, I guess. How do you spell Fenoff?
And his price here is $210,000.
Is that for which road?
It's 24. $795.
And this must be the one for 23?
Yep.
Afta from Kirk Fenoff? So for Town Highway 23 Bridge, the bid is 243820.
You wanna write the Town Highway 23 on the top of there, Lizzie?
Yep.
These will eventually get...
I could just say...
Oh, okay, oh, look at that!
Yep.
Right in... Wow, that looked like a form letter to me. A civic form letter, great.
Wanna keep this with that one, Dana?
And the next, next one is gravel construction. And they don't have, they don't tell you which is which, so we'll have to open them to find out.
Now, we know it says right at the top of the bid sheet.
Oh, this one's 24.
You have 24?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, 23 is 230,823.
And 24 is 236,660.
226?
236?
236.
660.
And these are from...
Brothers Engineering?
I think that's Nate.
That's Nate.
Yeah, I think it's probably later in the...
That's just my, that's the color I really miss.
Harold's Concrete from Concord, Vermont.
Oh, okay, I thought you were bidding on it.
I have Town Highway 24 here, and it's 199012.
199012? And I have 23, and I have 19920820.
20 cents.
Yeah.
20 cents?
Mm-hmm.
Not sure which is, but this is Alliance Consulting and Excavation.
Well, I guess you were right about sending these things out in the winter.
I mean, if we have sent them out in August, that would have double the number.
Alliance Consulting, Consulting and Excavation.
And Diana has 24.
Can you clarify the first name, is it Lyons?
Alliance, Alliance. Yeah. Mike's insurance company.
Really steal this one?
He's, he's out of there.
Okay, so I've got 23, and I've got total sum, 143825.
Say that again?
143...
43?
No, 143825.
143825.
Down to the last one. This is from J.A. McDonald.
I've got, uh, let's see, J.A. McDonald. And they are from Middlesex. So here's Town Highway 23, 173,500. Now they're all close.
And I've got 24, and it's 161,161,000.
161,000?
Mm-hmm.
50 or 60?
60.
60.
I'm sorry.
I was just answering Skip, clarification on the number, 161,000. So that does it. There doesn't seem to be a whole lot of other information that came with it, but there probably shouldn't be, because the bid documents are pretty clear.
We'll keep it, um, keep it simple.
Yep.
And these guys know that. Is there anybody on this list that I didn't recommend? So I mean, I would make the recommendation to award each bridge to the most...
So we can, we can actually have an executive session without leaving, 'cause all of you would be invited, so why don't we just ask Jerome to shut his camera off, and we'll have a little executive session?
Sure.
Well, it's, and actually, we have to make a motion.
Okay, we'll make a motion.
To enter executive session. So would you like to officially make a motion to...
We'll make a motion that we enter executive session, and we invite Michael, our road assistant, and Skip, our beam assistant, and Alfie, our road commissioner, and Nate, our project designer, and Robin, and Chris, and Lizzie, and...
And we just need to probably state, for the purposes of...
For the purposes of discussing a contract, basically.
That should work. Yeah, this has to go like that. All right, so there's a motion on the table. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Jerome.
So I think technically you have to reopen the meeting also.
Okay, we'll reopen the meeting.
I think normally, well, I could be wrong, but I think we just, the board exited executive session, is what the notes read, and we enter, and as we come out...
And they were brought back into our regular meeting.
Just usually put a time on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, you gotta time.
Exec, exited at whatever time. And then, yes, so are we recording?
Yes.
All right. So we had, have had an opportunity to look at the different bids, and I would make a motion that we award the construction of Town Highway 23 Bridge to Alliance Consulting and Excavation for...
No, it's, oh, it is excavation.
It is excavation. And is, I should include the, the number as well there, or does that not matter? Yep.
That'll be great.
For $143,825. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously. I would also make a motion that we award the construction of Town Highway 24 Bridge to J.A. McDonald Incorporated for $161,000. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 So I'll sign these two.
And then, so Nate, you'll communicate with those folks directly?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
And then just send me the scans of all the bids.
Okay. So I have. And you might want to make, I'll send, so the signed, the signed proposal, I will send to the low bidders so they have a copy of it.
Okay.
I don't think they need to take the copy, so it shouldn't be kind of out of that phase, I think. And then, and so basically, what the next step would be is they would coordinate with me to kind of give me a... Probably, what they'll actually do is they'll order the, the structures. And usually they'll send me what we call shop drawings, so that the manufacturer is actually going to deliver. I'll review those, so if I need to send, give them a thumbs up. And then we'll figure out when you're going to go, when we're going to start, give them a small window. So I'm already going to want money. So I put in the contract documents, three periods of payment for them. I can't remember specifically. But honestly, these are, these bids came in so well that I don't see, I don't see these guys asking for money until they're gotten. It's, it's not a big number for them.
Just want to start changing, we're changing treasures, so I was wondering if it might be wise to do it before that happens? I don't know.
Just see. Then I guess... No, I did put in timelines for payment, but not until July. Okay. So then, when, when they submit an invoice, we'll run that by you before that invoice is paid, or you'll come to the select board meeting again and... That would be great. Yeah. I mean, it's very basic. Yep. So I'm sure it just sort of now I could say, yeah. Okay. But my guess is both of these guys are just going to come in, do it, and send me bill. Okay. And I don't even have to go through all that mess. Yep. That's, I mean, we usually do that when it's a larger number. But they're, they're, they're used to, I mean, most of these guys have very large loan credits. They're used to... Carrying it. Yeah. And then, so you must have different periods during that project when you need to do inspections, pre-pour of concrete or whatever, and stuff like that? Yeah. So, so in the estimates that I had sent you back in December, the construction cost estimates, we also put a percentage on engineering. We put a 5%. So I think I pledged around 10,000 per structure, which I think is pretty high for what we're putting in. I don't see us spending that much time. But I, the way, the way we work, I mean, these guys know us, and the way we work is, we're pretty much there the whole time. And we work with them. We work with them to make sure that, you know, they dug down to the ones properly, you know, they're separate, they're putting in the, you know... The little things wrong, they're not there for the guardrail. But we might, we might help lay out, you know, put some stakes in the ground and say, no, this is where we wanted the guardrail. So we don't run into the situation where, oh, when they showed up two weeks later and the guardrails are in the wrong spot. Yeah. Guys got to come back. And these are such small jobs, you don't want to get them back. So we try to work closely with them, staying within our budget. So, yeah, I mean, and these are going to go fast, they really are. The, the concrete for Bridge 23 is not, it's, I mean, they're going to pour it, probably the next day. I'm going to tell them, yeah, strip it and start getting the forms ready for the, for the, the arch. It's not, it's not E14, let's put it that way.
And we talked about access for the homeowners.
So, basically, I put in the plans that they need to coordinate with the homeowner, they need to coordinate with the fire department, emergency services, and, and maintain, maintain a footbridge. That's usually what works pretty well on these deadened roads. So, and again, I mean, my experience with most, like, say we do a, most, our... 24 has a block, doesn't have concrete that needs to cure. But typically, what I would see on 24 would be Monday morning, they come in, they have it dug out by Monday afternoon. They're probably setting the structure no later than Wednesday. Back till Thursday, then on Friday.
Wow.
So that's how they're going to build the structures offsite?
Well, I would imagine they'd build, try to build them right there, but I think it's at least a couple days to build those, at least. I think so, those guy, I would be surprised, well, who knows how fast they go? Some of them go faster than others, but I, I don't see it taking a lot of time. Sometimes the bigger companies like McDonald, and I don't have, I mean, I've worked with McDonald, but just seeing some of the other guys that have more layers of people, sometimes go slower. Because, and then the owner-operator companies go faster. Alliance, he's more of an owner-operator. If you had Matthews do it, you'd have been an owner-operator. But it's going to go quick. Thanks for coming. Thanks, Nate. Yeah? And if anything comes up, give me a call. And otherwise, I'll send you a few emails. You'll let us know that they, because they, we've accepted it, but then they have to... Well, they've already. That, that's part of it, they're in. Yeah, they're in. Okay, great.
What do you mean, they're in? You already emailed them or no?
No, I'm saying, no. They gave you that piece of paper, it's out here, they're telling you. They're doing it.
Okay, alright.
So it's not like they have to accept.
Oh, okay.
A big job will actually have what we call a bid bar, where these guys will have to write a check or have a bond coming in for 5% of their bid.
Yeah.
To stop. That's happened in the past where guys have tried to get out.
So are we going to send a thank you letter to the, to the other bidders, just to keep them in good faith?
I think you said, you said you're going to do that.
Yeah, I generally send them a thank you, I mean, if the town wants to do it.
Yeah, no, I mean, I just don't want to leave, leave them hanging.
Yeah, right.
If we're going to try to stay in good faith with these companies for our future work, we want to get them, you know, in alert.
Thank you.
Great.
Okay, so you want copies of the bid page on all of these?
Yes.
And these two are the ones that I signed, right?
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, you too. Don't stay too late.
Robin.
That was productive. I'm glad he was here.
Can't really, no. Glad he was here.
So we can move on to the road commissioners' report. Mr. Larrabee?
Do we? I'm so sorry.
Did I skip something?
We only did one of the bids officially, right?
No, we did both.
No, we did both.
Okay, sorry.
You did.
Nevermind.
Not a lot to report, really, just some plowing, we say, a little bit. Trucks are holding up so far, and had a couple of little problems, but we're going to fix them.
We put the two-way tonne out there.
The one ton is back together, ready to go. After those few of our lines have been followed.
Right.
Sand pile is taking a real beating. I don't think it's something to be alarmed about yet, but it's, we're going through a lot.
Yep. We still have more sand.
We have 600 yards in Wolcott.
Okay.
If they let us go in and get it.
Right.
What percentage of that is, like, how many yards have we used already, would you say?
That's a good question. We've probably used half of what we put up.
Okay.
So that was 3,000 yards, so we've probably used 15, somewhere between 15 and 2,000 yards.
Okay.
I'm just, it's early.
Yeah.
We're not even in February yet, so it's just something to think about. Because of the cold, we have a lot of chunks, which, you know, if it doesn't warm up, we can run them back through the screen and break it up, which will make it go longer. But it's just, it gets nerve-wracking.
Yeah.
And you start getting low on sand.
So what, um, yeah. When would we be worried?
I'll let you know end of February.
Okay, yeah.
And if it don't look good, we're going to have to act.
And what does acting look like?
It looks like sending trucks to Hardwick, and hopefully they'll open and load, load 600 yards for us.
Because they normally don't do that in the winter.
Right.
Okay.
But the pit is not closed, is it? The pit, the Wolcott that you go to, is it?
Well, they close for the winter.
Oh, they do?
I don't know if they keep it plowed.
Oh.
You know, so it's actually possible. I'm not sure what their status is with that, but, you know, it's harder for, for them because they have to have a loader there. Have to start a loader, you know, every day in the cold days, colder, you know, it's just more difficult. I, I don't know if they will or won't. I'm assuming they will. But it's just something that I want to keep you guys alert about. I don't think it's anything to be alarmed about because we, you know, we're going to start getting some better days, better weather. If it, if it does become alarming, I'm going to say we're coming back on sand. That's what I'm going to say. I mean, we've been putting a lot of sand out, a lot of sand. Because we had some complaints earlier in the winter, and I just said, okay, that's what we're doing. So I may have to reverse that if we start getting to dangerous situations. I feel running out.
Alright, so you'll let us know in...
I will let you know somewhere, yeah.
Mid, mid February?
February.
Okay.
I just signed up that, I can't think of anything, was there any questions? There's been a lot of cars parked, like, there's the one car that was at the town office was removed, but there was one there this morning. And it's just a hassle because I have to steer around it, I can't clean up.
Are these like, folks leaving it as like a park and ride, or are they abandoning them?
It was there overnight, certainly. It was all covered with snow this morning.
It was gone when I got there, 8:30, so.
Okay, yeah. So I was there probably seven, and it was still there.
So we never did put a...
It just looks kind of sloppy because I have to steer around it, and then the ladies have to walk through the snow that I couldn't clear. Same with the school, there was one parked out here, and where you guys parked, I think you were parking in snow because I couldn't plow, it was a car. So I don't know if that's, if we need to do some signage, if we need, I don't know how to remedy that. Maybe no overnight parking or something like that, just, you know, we don't want to stop them completely, but I think the overnight thing, especially during the winter, is not a problem, so.
So that would be something, signage we'd have to put up in the spring for next year?
Oh, you could put it up this year.
We could put up a sign now? Okay.
I mean, it might not be a sign on metal posts, but it could be a sign on...
Depends, depends. We might only get a post in the ground. You know, it'll be back where it's not plowed or something like that. Do you want me to order some signs? I mean, it's, put signs up, but then you go to enforce it, and that's kind of court work for everybody. But it's, it's, it's work anyway, because I, you know, I need more of my plowing time to, to work around vehicles. And then there's a lot, a mess left, and, you know, it's just... So I feel like it might be worth at least putting a couple of signs up, saying no overnight parking or something like that.
Over here, would you have to get the, oh, we own the land, I guess you don't have to get the school's permission?
We're, we're in charge of getting the plowings, so.
Maybe on that side over by the bank where people tend to leave their cars overnight.
What do you think the cost would be for, what do you think, like, a couple of signs here and one at the town office, or would you recommend?
Yeah, probably three signs, probably a couple hundred dollars. We've got posts already that we could use some, use some older things that were shorter, so I don't think it would be a big expense.
Seems reasonable to me. And then hopefully people will actually follow what the sign says.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's a first step, for sure.
Sure, sounds good. Thanks, Alfie.
I think I'm good with this one.
We'll keep this meeting moving along. Move on to the recovery officer's report. Skip?
Yeah, my report is going to be a little bit earlier. So again, we're just about at the tail end of the disaster 4720, that was July 2023. We just received 83,162.20. For County Road, we received radar signs, we received that on the 14th of January. There are just one project, or there's just one project remaining. Those funds, it's the Cavett Road, those funds were told close to $20,000. And those are due to be released on February 17. So once those are released, there will be a real milestone. Other projects associated with the disaster from July 2023 will have been funded. Except for the state. The state comes in afterwards, and they'll do their reconciliation and send us additional funds. So that'll be a good milestone. I have another two. Again, these are the two mitigation projects you guys just awarded bids to. So I just wanted to double-check any remaining funds. What, what can we do with the remaining funds? It appears now we'll have for Town Highway 24, 253,000 dollars left over. And for Town Highway 23, 347,000 dollars. So that's significant amounts of money. So I reached out to Department of Public Safety, the public assistance officer. And we had a series of emails, one of which started in 2023. And this is how funds get released. So VTrans District Tech, be inspecting the bridges according to the SOFORD, the mitigation portion. If completed, the town VTrans will sign off and return the project close-up in certification report, PCC ERAP. So she indicated this will release all filed funds from the Feds. So the Feds will release, once these projects are done, the entire amount, which totals 905,794 dollars.
Release it to the state?
To the state, and the state will send it to us.
Really?
Can you say that number again?
It's a staggering amount of money.
That's a staggering amount of money.
It really is.
Yeah.
Yeah, 900, yeah.
So, but, but it's like 700?
Out of which we'll have to pay these two little people. 300,000, yeah.
Yeah.
Wow.
So, and, and she went on to indicate you'll get the federal share for any small projects below a million dollars. So these are two projects, separate and distinct, so we'll be able to get those money. For projects over 250K, she goes on, we require all cost documentation to get the state ERAP share, which will be based on actuals. So the federal share is based on estimates from DeWolton Associates. The ERAP share, which is the state share, will be based on 143,825 and 161.
Okay.
So another part of an email, she goes on, if you complete a project for less than the federal estimate, you must document and use the excess fund for another town road project. And keep record in case of a federal audit. And keep record in case of a federal audit. It says you cannot use these funds for another federally funded project. So in other words, you can use it for other road projects, but you can't use it for federal. However, persistently.
So we can use them only for road projects relating to mitigating, like flooding issues? Is that correct? Like, we couldn't use them for guardrails? Or couldn't?
If you can mitigate a flood, yeah.
But all of our culvert work, or we can buy more culverts and do all that culvert work.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, I'll lie across here just for a second. Michael, I, I came across a, some document from some state agency, which gives the location, photos and size and, uh, lap lawn for every culvert in Woodbury. And also the state of its disrepair or whatever. So my thinking is, is that hire a contractor to, first, look at all the culverts that you wanna replace, hire a contractor and let them go to work on it. You know, and just replace all these small eighteen-inch culverts that are flooded already and that have vegetation growing on through them. That's, that's one use place.
We could, we could replace the large culverts in Church Street and Bailey Brook Road.
Can you use that one for that? Those, that would be mitigation.
And those, those need to be done and those will be costly, I mean, the ones that were.
We have to be very careful. You know, what, you would want to be sure of, to do like a project plan. This is what we're intending to do. This is what our cost estimate is. And it's mitigation projects. And then send it to the mitigation officer, work with FEMA and have him give the blessing that we can use.
Before we actually?
Before we actually sign a contract.
So those necessarily wouldn't be mitigation projects, they haven't proven to be. Uh, you know, with the flooding that we've had, none of those, um, dilapidated culverts have washed out, so it's not really a mitigation project.
Well, we could ask them to come out to the site and have them determine whether or not.
Yeah, if they're bad condition, they could, in the future. You know, the whole Greenwood Light could come down and flood the village. We don't want that.
Well, the culvert without, it, it wouldn't.
Wouldn't help.
Would.
Me too.
What about Mill Pond?
To rebuild Runrich, you mean? I mean, the dam?
Mill Pond's not really a danger anymore.
No, yeah, they, I mean, they would not want you to build, or at least the state wouldn't watch you build the bridge back, uh, the dam back. And, and the culvert held up when the dam went out.
That was a good culvert.
As culverts go, yeah.
So what this tells me is that the, um, the national, you know, the work that we wanted to do on Buckley Brook Bats, the USDA is also federal money. So, um, chances are we won't be able to use that for a match.
Oh.
But she goes on to say, on January twenty-fourth, there are some instances where it has happened, but FEMA needs to be fully involved. Here's my question, you know, can you use it in a FEMA project? So she backtracks and now she adds this nuance. There are some instances where it has happened, but FEMA needs to be fully involved in what the other federal program covers. Then they will pick up.
Oh, okay, well, good.
Okay, so, you know, kind of equivocating, nuanced.
Give it a rehate.
You know, nothing that we haven't been dealing with for the past year and a half. And I put potential uses would be the FEMA Brick Building Resilience Infrastructure and Communities Grant. And the USDA and RCS Natural Resources Conservation Service Emergency Water Sichet Program. Buckley Brook Back Stabilization Project and County Road Culvert Replacement.
And those are all federal projects that they would have to be involved in?
Well, the, uh, the brick one, I think is more a state project, but it is, it's Vermont Emergency Management, which is FEMA. So I, I don't, yeah, it would be a federal share, so it is, it is federally funded. So another thought I have, just kind of popped into my head is that, you know, if there was money left over, even to fund these two projects, could we create a flood resilient fund, like a specific fund for the town for any kind of replacement of culverts that get washed out in the future? Or do we have to spend it by a certain amount of time?
I think putting that back, if there's a timeframe in which we have to spend it, I think.
They'll probably wanna have it cleaned up at some point.
Usually it's eighteen months.
Yeah, from the disaster? From the flood?
No.
No? To close out?
I don't, I don't wanna misspeak, so I will, uh, if it's like less than six months, we're gonna be really busy. All right, so it appears as though we may be able to use this.
Okay.
Leaning towards being able to use it, which is good. I'm just saying if we could. And for our latest disaster, that's forty-eight ten VR dash VT, July twenty twenty-four, it's still going through, you know, all the FEMA processes and various departments in FEMA. So, you know, the federal share for, for that particular disaster is eighty thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars. And I don't expect to see that until the fourth quarter of this year. Because they're just, it's there, I see it every day and, uh, it's just not going anywhere. Isn't that, remember the FEMA snake?
Yeah, where are we there?
Yellow brick road. I didn't miss it or?
Still in the middle? Wow.
Stuck in the middle again.
Those are a new snake for the new project?
Same snake.
Oh, okay.
Same snake, different snake.
Got longer?
Different project.
Hate snakes.
So, you know, that's what we've been working on.
Still having meetings regularly?
Meetings weekly.
Weekly? Oh, gosh.
And, uh, you know, emails occasionally. You know, but, you know, it's, it's slowing down because, you know, the damage in twenty twenty-four is much less significant than twenty-three.
Yeah.
So hardly any questions. I think in the twenty twenty-three disaster, we had over sixty discreet locations in Woodbury that sustained damages. So and that generated each, generated a piece of paper, which each generated a project, which you had to oversee with them. But this, so twenty twenty-four only had sixteen locations.
Piece of cake.
Cleaned up in a month, right?
Well, Alfie, yeah, it is for just about. So I expect, expect one more payment for the twenty twenty-three and then we're done with that project, save the mitigation project.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thanks. Team effort.
Any questions for Skip?
I still, I don't know, I just always had the feeling that because in twenty twenty-three, we did so much work, that was, at, at the end, it was like ninety-something percent paid for. And during all that time, our guys weren't using the regular budget. So it always almost seemed like at some point we're gonna end up with extra money that could go back to the taxpayers.
Well, I think our current treasury begged, borrowed and stole, you know, other accounts.
Yeah, yeah, but still.
Yeah, so she was able to manipulate that. Now, believe it or not, we have an excess of like twenty-three thousand dollars.
Is that all?
Is that all? You're like Steve Burkey a couple of weeks ago, said, who we got all this money? But we really don't. And no, no trust.
Oh.
So, uh, so we have an overage of twenty-three thousand dollars. And the last email I saw from Brandy, she was going to put that towards, I think, and you should probably check with her, um, road crew payroll. But we don't have any, you know, it's not like we have this windfall of three hundred thousand dollars in the account. Would've been nice.
Yeah, well, we might have some after these next two projects are done.
Only to be used for mitigation.
No, I mean, yeah.
No truck.
Right, but we should be thinking about that.
Yeah.
Right, for, for mitigation onwards, yeah, you know, we've got a couple chosen on the county road.
That's right.
Already, um, but we should be trying to put others together for, cause that's a good chunk of money that we could spend.
Yeah.
If we can cut through the red tape provided by FEMA. Right, to be able to use that money in there.
I could write a proposal, wish, you know, a little project plan.
Would you?
Sure.
I mean, I really like Michael's idea, if we could just put it into a fund somehow.
Yeah, I don't think.
A portal for a future flood. We have something, but I don't know, FEMA probably wouldn't offer that.
But I'll find out, again, I took a note. You know, how much time do we have to spend this money?
Cause it's quite a bit of money.
Significant.
Yeah, so.
A win rate.
Yeah, I mean, but if it's eighteen months, I mean, that's really having to hire contractors to come in to, to do that.
Help with the culverts.
Help with the culverts.
If, if these two, um, pending projects with their matches, um, those could probably be all done within that timeframe, even though we had decided to budget. Well, the one, the one that we leave a, um, in our CS program, we decided that we wouldn't put it in the budget because we're hoping that some of that extra money was sort of, would need to be in the, um, and if we could apply it for this other project that I want to let you know about today.
We already budgeted for what, Wilbur Road and Green Pond Road?
Yeah, those are, yeah. So, and those aren't really mitigation projects, those are more erosion prevention projects, which I guess. But, yeah, I'm sure Alfie has some culverts that he would like to make bigger.
Yeah, and if we could not spend that thirty thousand dollars that we put in the budget for culverts. That'd be, that'd be nice.
I mean, Wilbur, the Wilbur Road project, the Better Roads Grant technically is a mitigation project from the flooding that was caused on the last two July heavy rains. But we're basically gonna be able to fund that through the Better Roads.
Is there a plan for that? Does somebody have an idea?
Alfie has a good idea, yeah. The Better Roads, people also have thoughts on what to do there. But it would be increasing culverts, especially the one where the block is, so that the water doesn't back up and then run down the road and, you know, flood the bigger like properties. There's actually erosion from the hillside in the road that has run directly into the lake. So that's what makes it all hydrologically connected, so we can do the Better Roads grant with Alpha.
Oh, great.
But it is technically a mitigation project, I'm sure.
Any final questions for Skip before we move on to the signing of the town meeting warning?
Skip, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And thanks for offering a better proposal. It's great.
Michael O'Leary. Sure.
Can't imagine you get too many objections.
Okay. So this is all as we previously approved with a couple of little typos, like there was a dollar sign missing somewhere and put the, uh, uh, there was a little language change here, moving the operating senses from here to here, but basically the same, as we already approved. And gone to the printer. So I make a motion that we officially approve this morning for annual town meeting to take place on March one, Saturday, at ten o'clock in the Woodbury Elementary School Gymnasium.
All right. Any discussion? Had a chance to look at it and talked about it last week.
Yeah, we did talk about it a few times.
Hearing no discussion, all is in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously and we'll sign the warning.
And then John reminded me that there had to be a, a line here for Robin received and recorded.
Right. Thanks for putting that together, Diana. All right, we're on to Michael. Um, and then there's two, we added under this the brick grant.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, um, let's deal with the USDA, um, natural protection program first. So, um, there's, we, there's no application that we need to submit. There is a grant agreement that I met with Brian Boig last week and we worked on the agreement. He was going to send, did he send a copy to you, Diana?
I don't think so.
He was gonna have it sent to the town in time for tonight's meeting.
Was Brian the gentleman that was on the Zoom call?
Yes.
The other, okay, yep.
He's a, he's a planner, um, with the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission.
Okay.
Would he have sent it to the select board email?
I have no idea.
Okay.
He had, I mean, the select board, he felt that the, even though you've approved me to sign up on these things, he felt it would be better that the select board signed up on it. And then I'm the contact person and he's the technical assistant.
So if it's lost, if it's, um, somewhere in our email system, do we have to wait for two more weeks or?
No, um.
Do we approve it anyways?
Once we have it and have a paper copy, um, somebody from the select board could come down to the town office. I'll find out where it is tomorrow. I, I looked on my computer.
What's his last name?
Brian Boig, B-O-I-G-T.
I don't really see that name coming, but I'll double check again.
Michael, can you remind me with this?
Okay, so this, this. We have, um, so the Natural Resources Conservation Service has awarded two sites that they will, um, uh, do the design work for a hundred percent. And then, um, for the actual implementation, construction, um, we, the town, um, would be, uh, our match would be twenty-five percent for that. And they would pay seventy-five percent of the construction, the town match would be twenty-five percent. And it comes to about, um, they don't have that stuff with me, but I think it was about thirty.
Thirty-two oh five was just the larger one and then a hundred and seventy-two was the smaller.
For the smaller one, yeah.
Three, three, seven, seven, thirty-four, both of them. And this was money you thought would hopefully be payable out of our excess FEMA money.
The bridge work, yeah, that was, that was kind of what we had talked about. You know, we're, they'll do the work, the design work. We have to make a, a commitment when the excavator starts the work. So if we, you know, if we can't get that FEMA money.
Okay, well, the number I, the number I just read was wrong.
Okay.
That was the administration money. The sponsor share on the, uh, Cabot Road project would be thirty-five thousand, six hundred and twelve. And the other one was one thousand, nine, fourteen for the.
And that one's the county road one?
Yes, County Road, right at the end of Duck Pond Road.
Right across from Steve's, please.
Yeah.
And down a little bit, headed south. The town road crew could probably do that project. We would have to get permission from the property owner to, cause a lot of the work would be done on, on property. But if there is extra money from FEMA to pay for our town match on that too, then, um, the, the, this project, we definitely will need to hire our contractor for. the, the, this project, we definitely will need to hire our contractor for.
The Cabot Road, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's kind of beyond what the road crew would want to take on.
I haven't seen the design, but.
Okay, yeah, I, I don't know when we'll see the design, but I know that when we had the B Trans emergency grant to fix another chunk of that thing, we did contract it out.
Skip, do you want to make a quick comment?
Yeah, I just had a question, Michael. The brick grant, what's the town's match on that?
That depends on whether we can, we still have the ninety percent. So initially, funding is available at seventy-five percent federal share. And then in the second email that I got from this fellow named Brian Everhart, he says it's, um, the estimated cost sharing is assuming that there'll be a ninety percent federal cost share.
But all you need is a dollar amount.
There's no, um, let's see, the dollar amount originally, well, the pre-application was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So that would be the town's match, a hundred and fifty?
No, no, that's the, that's the total cost of the project.
So for ninety percent?
Two percent.
Fifty thousand, yeah. And this, this, the hundred and fifty thousand would be for basically a study, um, of the Buck Lake Brook from the end of Buck Lake, um, down to, uh, the village here, to try to come, see if there's any, um, flood mitigate or flood, uh, you know, any work that could be done to try to eliminate the flooding in the village. That's the whole purpose of this.
But I thought this, I, this brick is that the NRCS, have we skipped over the, from the NRCS grant to the?
No, this is a different grant. The, the NRCS grant would pay for the damaged banks and the shoring up of the banks.
So that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, this study that you're talking about.
The study that I'm talking about is a hundred and fifty thousand. That was the original, that was the original proposal and the pre-application that we put in last fall.
Wow.
And I, we worked, I worked that out with the folks at the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission. That would be for study, design work, and implementation. So it would be like the whole, whole package. And that was just a estimate on how much it would cost. Hard to say what they're going to come up with for, for work and. So that particular grant, as I mentioned, um, or the pre-application for the grant, was originally a hazard mitigation grant, pre-application. That got sidelined, um, and the reasoning that I was given is that it wasn't appropriate for a FEMA hazard mitigation grant, and that they had to put it in, into another, uh, kind of waiting room, I'll call it. And this is the response, now that they're trying to get it out of the waiting room for the town to consider. And I could read you the, let me just read the email. I did send this to you guys to read, but I'll read it again. Vermont Emergency Management is contracting Woodbury to invite you to apply for scoping funding within the FEMA Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Brick, that's what BRIC stands for, twenty twenty-four grant. Of the federal funding available through this program, two million dollars is set aside for the state of Vermont for planning and scoping projects. Funding is available at seventy-five percent, um, federal share. And then it has a little asterisk there, because economically disadvantaged rural communities, which Woodbury is, qualify for ninety percent federal share. So, and at this point, they're reviewing all the communities, and they can, they'll let us know soon whether we would qualify for the ninety percent federal share.
Just to be clear, the Buck Lake study is the brick study?
Yes.
And it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar study? There's no?
That's what, that's what we, that's what we proposed as an estimate.
But you've also said it would include design and implementation.
That's what I was told.
Okay, so the, so the hundred and fifty grand is, is total project, okay.
All right.
Yeah.
So we're inviting you to develop and submit the following project for funding for engineering analysis and design. The Woodbury Buck Lake Brook funding study, that's what they've called it. Applications are due by the end of February of this year. And then a second email, um, if you're interested in applying, please notify us. And I did notify them, saying, yes, we are interested. And then, cut it back to the, um, let's see. Okay, so these are just notes on how to, how to get, um, get the ball rolling. And I do plan on working with the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission as the technical assistants for the, for this grant application. So what I would like, um, from the select board is to go ahead to, to continue with the application process for this, for the study, for the brick grant also.
Okay, so bottom line, this could be, could cost us what?
Fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay.
Let's say ninety percent.
About ninety percent.
Seventy-five percent. What would that be like, uh, thirty-seven, five, thirty-seven, something like that?
But before the, without the study, how can they even estimate implementation?
That's just, that's the people at the Regional Planning Commission with their, you know, having worked on a number of projects for, for towns in the region, that's kind of what they figure it would cost.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, it sounds like a good plan, if you're willing to keep working on it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, these were originally kind of the impetus from the planning commission, and I've been the one that's been working on them since the beginning. So I, I would like to continue with this. And, you know, we can apply for it, and if we get it, and then we just say, figure that, oh, you know, we don't have the money, or, or we don't want to spend the money on the study, then we could just say, thank you, but, but no thanks.
Well, even if they do the study, and it doesn't seem like it's a reasonable project to implement, I'm sure we don't have to go any further, but it would be nice to at least have the study after we've been talking about this for so long.
Right, I mean, the goal is to have some kind of sense from people who have the ability to evaluate the, you know, the whole watershed coming down into the village, what we could do to prevent the village from being flooded so frequently.
While there's still a few buildings left.
Right.
Seems like a worthwhile thing.
Okay, so I'll, I'll keep that in, and I'll figure out what happened to that grant agreement and let you guys know.
Oh, yeah, okay, if there's something I need to sign?
Yeah.
Let me know.
Yeah. Okay, so that's, yeah, that's pretty much for those two. And I'll, I'll let this person know that the select board has given, um, we can go ahead to do the application, and then I'll get ahold of, you know, Keith Cullen, who is the main person to help me out with this, and Brian also.
Thanks, Michael. Uh, our seven forty agenda item, wow, we're doing all right. Is, uh, appointed liaison to the Vermont State Ethics Commission?
Yeah, but actually, we are supposed to do that by the end of this month. And, um, I don't know why he didn't stay, but John Reed volunteered to do this.
Oh, he did?
Yeah, it's awesome of him.
He thought it would be inappropriate, something for, uh, auditor. Hopefully, he's going to run for auditor again.
I'll make a motion that we appoint John Reed to be the Vermont, our representative, our liaison to the Vermont State Ethics Commission.
Got to wait for, got to wait for Michael to write it down.
I'll tell him in a second. Motion's been made. Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You probably know what it's, um, it's an estimate for culverts. Very large, just like their prices, pricing on two, two culverts.
Michael, we just, uh, oh, no, that's fine. Just want you to know, we, um, just made a motion to appoint John Reed, um, to the, as our liaison to the.
Be your liaison to Vermont State Ethics Commission, sorry.
Oh, that's right. All right, um, do we need to, we have updates on other businesses to approve bills and payroll orders, but do we still need a, um, executive session for discussing compensation for training the new treasurer?
You know, no, she's not here, so, um, I thought, it's about, you know, we need to. She says she wants to do it as a contractor, and, um, not sure why, but I offered her to, you know, be appointed as an assistant treasurer. That way she could still, you know, do things and sign checks and stuff in the meantime, but she said she wanted to be a contractor, so.
Should we talk about it next?
Because she stays on payroll, she can't.
Get a health insurance?
Her health insurance.
Yeah, but if she making the same, well, she taking the same amount of money, I don't know what difference it would be, but.
Should we talk about it next, like, try to do it next meeting, if she's here?
Yeah.
I guess she will not be when this next meeting.
She'll be, she'll be started.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, we're talking about Brandy.
Yeah, but I mean, she, but as soon as Willie starts on the first, uh, third of February, we'll have to be paying Brandy. I was just going to suggest we pay her thirty dollars an hour, like we're paying the new treasurer.
Yeah, I mean, as a contractor, I think she can probably, uh, set her rate. So, and we would have to.
But you also have to remember, you're not giving Brandy any benefits if she's going as a contractor.
That's right, that's up to her.
But I would, I think it would be up to her to set a rate.
Okay.
For us. So we'll table that discussion for the next meeting. And, um, we can probably sign all of our bills off the record if, uh, we want to make a motion, somebody wants to make a motion to adjourn?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Any discussion?
No.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourns at, hear that, seven forty-eight.
Wow.